All right, everybody. I'd like to start with walk-ins, but if I could ask that if you are here for something that is on the agenda, if you could please hold your comments until that time because we would like to proceed as, you know, expeditiously as possible. So if someone has something as a walk-in that they'd like to say that does not relate to something on the agenda, please feel free. All right, everyone has an agenda. Okay. Thank you. And now for the report of our town administrator, Jim Boudreaux.
Thank you. We'll start with the water update. Construction of the water mains on utility is just about completed. The contract will be taken as main crew and heading over to Old Oak and Bucket where we've already started work on the mains, so we'll have two crews on Old Oak and Bucket shortly. Once they finish testing on utility, they'll start doing the individual home services. So the mains are complete, they'll test them, and then start hooking up the houses. Once that is done, that neighborhood will be a complete mess, and at some point, either in the fall or in the spring, we'll go back and put down a binder coat and clean that up. We'll let the trenches settle before we do that. The reservoir right now is at plus 4.5, which is unusual for this time of year to have a plus in the reservoir. We got .7 inches of rain over the last week, and our usage last week was 1.371 million gallons per day, which is very low for us this time of year, and also low than the previous week. So despite everybody complaining about the rain and the crappy weather, it does have one good, positive benefit, and that our water levels are very high and our water supply is very good at this point. It also helps keep the manganese levels down in the ponds. We went by today, and you can see the aerator. The water's almost like a little brown coming out of the aerator, and that's all the manganese in the lower pond that's been put in there over the years. So having the rainwater and they keep that down, which helps reduce our incidences of brown water going forward. On the COVID front, we had two cases in the last week. That doubled our case count from the previous week. Went from one to two, so that was an increase from .17% to .34%. So when these small numbers, just a little change makes a big change on that. The state rate was up to .87, which is up from .50 the previous week. Almost all the new cases that we're seeing right now are the so-called Delta variant in Massachusetts. The vaccinations do work against the Delta variant. We are seeing what they call breakthrough infections, people who have been vaccinated that still get COVID. However, the vaccinations make the incidence of COVID much less. You're much less likely to be in the hospital, end up in intensive care, so we are still hoping people will get vaccinated. I'm not going to tell anybody else about Vaximillions, because the more people who sign up, the less my odds are. But the first drawing will be next week. You get $1 million if you're fully vaccinated. Right now, the odds are about five in 3 million, so that's better than any scratch ticket you have.
No scratch ticket.
So if I don't show up for work after that, you'll know where I am. The countryway sidewalk, if you go by it, you'll see that they've done most of the site work getting ready. We are anticipating that we'll do the binder coat by the end of this week. That'll sit for a little while while we have to wait for National Grid to come in and move some of the poles. The binder will be down there for a while, and depending upon when National Grid comes in and moves everything, we'll do the top coat. So that could be quickly, it could be for a little while, but we will get the binder coat down shortly. You're going to know what that looks like. Once we're done that, we'll start working on Stockbridge Road. That's next on our list for our sidewalk plan, and that will go from the top of the hill at Green Bush Train Station down to the First Parish area. And that's, again, been partly designed, but we will need to go back out, shoot more grades, and do some more design on that before we can start construction. If you go back to that, you'll see that Stephen and Rank is gone. The contract committee's taking down the fencing. He's taken down the boards. He's getting ready to do that. We are expecting what they call the pulverizer machine. It's supposed to be in tomorrow. That's been delayed a couple of days, so you might see it sit for a couple of days before they get the pulverizer in. That's a rebuilding completely of that rink. It's funded by CPC. It is anticipated to be done mid-September, excuse me. Once it's done, it has to sit for three or four weeks before they can put the coating on the asphalt, but that's going to be a really nice project when it's done. That gets a lot of use. It's too bad the kids won't be able to get it now, but we really can't do the project when school starts. It's too disruptive, so we'll get that done. Wooders Walk Clubhouse, the renovations are ongoing. If you go down there now, you can see the size of what the new clubhouse is going to look like. Basically, we expanded the old clubhouse all over the deck, and now we'll be putting a deck on top of that. There'll be a brand-new kitchen, new bathrooms, new handicap accessibility, new pro shop, and then when it's all done, the parking lot will get redone, paved, and nice plantings. I think it'll be really very nice. The golf course, if you haven't been down there, it's in great shape. I took a walk around it the other day just to see what it was like. I swear I wasn't playing, I was just walking around. But it's in pretty good shape. One of the projects we're working on is Well 18, which is over by the transfer station, has a green sand filter on it. The green sand filter takes the iron and manganese out of the water, which causes black water, and then those filters need to be flushed. So what we're going to do with that water that flushes out those filters, we're going to pipe that back over to the golf course. It'll go into a sediment jam, it'll let the iron and manganese settle out, and then that water will go into the pond and be used to water the golf course. So instead of just wasting that water and getting rid of it, we'll put it to use back on the golf course. Depending upon how much use Well 18 is getting, it could be 10,000-plus gallons in a day for the golf course, which is almost enough to water the golf course. So that's kind of a win-win for everybody. It's ongoing. They're putting the pipes in now. I don't think it'll be ready before the end of this golf season. It might, but we're hoping it'll be ready by next golf season. The clubhouse is scheduled to be done October, November is the deadline for that right now, and once we have that far enough along that the kitchen is in place, we will put out a new RFP for operators of the clubhouse to come in and take a look and give us bids on operating the clubhouse going forward. So that will be ready when the golf course opens up in the spring. For people who are looking to sell their house, they should need to know that new regulations are in place to prevent backups for residents and INI for the town under our SOAR department. Similar to a Title V inspection, when you sell your house, you have to have your Title V inspected to make sure it's working correctly. Now, at the time of sale or transfer of property, a video inspection is required for all properties with a SOAR service constructed out of clay, cast iron, or asbestos concrete. And this is to ensure that that connection is working, it is intact, it is not leaking, it is not blocked, we're not getting INI into the system. At the same time, any new SOAR lines installed within tightly influenced areas will need to be wrapped to prevent INI and leakage into those areas. Details of those can be found on the website under the SOAR Department, situudma.gov, DPW, and then SOAR Department. Two new things that, one just Kevin just whispered in my ears. The transfer station has run out of large bags due to a COVID supply problem. Our company that we get the large bags from has run out of the resin that manufactures the bags. We have contracted with a new supplier in Maine. They are working on those bags now. If we have issues, they have bags ready if we need to. We will go get them, but we're working on any of those new bags as quickly as possible. But this is all part of the entire COVID-related supply issues that people are seeing everywhere. Do the best we can. We'll get them as quickly as possible. Again, if we have to, we'll put some in the truck to drive to Maine and get them and get them back down here. Finally, just for the board, the Chief Justice Cushing Highway property that was authorized to purchase at town meeting, which is on the right side of Chief Justice Cushing Highway when you go past Old Forge, the closing on that will be tomorrow. So by the end of the day tomorrow, that property will be ours. And as you are aware from last week's meeting, that is being contemplated as a possible location for a new water treatment plant. So it'll be nice to get that under our control before we can build a water treatment plant on it. So that's what I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board? Tony?
Just two quick questions. Interesting 1.3 million gallons we use per day over the weekend. Typically, this time of year, it's like 2.2.
Seven over two.
So we use a million, almost a million gallons to water our lawns for our water supply.
Yep.
What do people do if they don't have bags?
We have, the small bag is still available. They buy the small bags.
So if they have something to throw away, they just buy a small bag at the, okay.
And like Jim had said, we're, you know, if we have to send somebody, have to drive off, I think it's Lewis to Maine, we'll drive off to Maine and come back with a pickup truck load to get a small one if we have, if they're ready. So I just crossed.
Great. Thanks.
Karen? Questions? Nope? Marla?
Yeah, just have a quick question. Jim, as part of those new sewer regulations, do we send a notice to the realtors in town?
Kevin, do we send a notice to the realtors? I believe we talked about it. Did we send it?
We spoke to the realtors. Will it send something? And this was actually, it's been on the books for a long time. It's not a new regulation.
But it's now in effect, right?
It's being enforced.
Okay.
So Will had reached out to the realtors. He actually had classes with some of the different realtors. I haven't quite filled out.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew?
Good.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Jim. Onto the next item. The notice of intent to sell 17.42 acres, parcel 006-001-003, also known as Zero Border Street. Jim, could you just give us a brief description of what the situation is currently?
So this is part of the entire piece of property called the Bleke property, which is right on the Cohasset border on Border Street. The property on the Gulf side has all been sold, except for one parcel. I think it's all remained within 61A. So this is under what's called 61A agricultural property. Under 61A, a homeowner gets a tax break to keep the property in an agricultural use. In return, if they wish to sell that property and convert it to a non-agricultural use, the town has the right of first refusal to purchase that property. The Bleke family, or the trust that owns the property on the right-hand side as you're heading down Border Street towards Cohasset, have received an offer. We looked at it. We believe at this point it is a bona fide offer of $2.35 million for approximately 14 acres of the Bleke property. They have notified us of that offer. We have 120 days to notify them whether or not the town wishes to exercise its right of first refusal. And I believe within that 120 days, we also have to appropriate any funds that would be used to purchase that property within 120 days. So we will talk later on about the date for town meeting. I'll just say the date that's on here is within the 120 days. That's not a coincidence. We had two dates that we looked at. We made sure we picked the one that was within the 120 days. So for the board now, the board will have to decide whether or not they wish to exercise their right of first refusal. I was unaware until tonight that that requires a public hearing, which we will have to notice in the paper, so the board will not be able to actually take that vote tonight. Also, the planning board is meeting on Thursday night, and they will make a report to you about what their position is on this property, but the board will have to decide whether or not they wish to purchase that land at the $2.35 million that has been offered. And then if we do, we will then have to have the conversations about, okay, how are we going to pay for it? What's the mechanism? And what are we going to do with it after we buy it? So that's where we are at this point.
Thank you. I will say I thank everyone who emailed us, and I think everyone on this board is acutely aware of how special that property is and how much people value it, and so there's no question, I don't think, among us that it is worth preserving if it's at all possible to do. So we are taking all the steps necessary and assure you that we understand that people consider this property very important. Karen, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think Jim summarized it very well, and you expressed exactly all I feel about this property. I think that we need to hold the public meeting as soon as the planning board has a find or whatever other board needs to opine, and then we will convene again on the subject of it.
We should probably hear from the Conservation Commission as well, I would think.
I'm sure they'll weigh it at some point.
Tony?
Nope. Nothing to add.
Marla?
Nope, not until public hearing. I'm good.
Yeah, no, I just.
All right. So if everyone understands we have to have a public hearing about this, and this meeting tonight does not constitute a public hearing, we have to put ads in the paper and notify the public generally that it is a public hearing. So that would be our next step. Questions, comments from the audience? Yes, sir, if you can identify yourself?
Sure. Conan Dorsey, Sixteenth Avenue. Just a quick comment, as you know, the financial decision being weighed, and there's a lot to that, just something I've been doing a lot of research on lately and kind of blown away by, is the benefit of nature child development, early child development. And it's a hard thing to quantify, obviously, but it's like the kids who play in the woods or fields and set playgrounds have better attention spans, better cognitive development all around, better hand-eye coordination. They're more social. They have a better ability to socialize with kids outside the area. And he went on and on. It's pretty wild. So it's just something to consider as you're trying to figure out what is this land really good to us. And COVID lockdown made us all aware of how much we really value being close to nature and nature trails and everything else, and not stuck in, you know, landlocked or small apartments in the city. But this child development is a new thing for me and seems very worthwhile.
Thank you. Yes? Identify your.
Marla Minier, 29, Christopher Lane. Just for the board's information, a committee has been formed of citizens from the area, Situud, Cohasset, and just the general area. We have put in a proposal to CPC. CPC's seen they're going to consider this proposal. Some of you were at that meeting, so you know that. But just know that we also are in the process of trying to raise private monies to augment the CPC proposals so that we can match the purchase price of $2.35 million.
Yes, sir?
George McGoldrick, representing the Golf Association, which is a multi-board network of Situud and Cohasset. We have been looking at the property for almost two years since Eleanor passed away, and we were very involved in trying to acquire the entire thing. We had the tractors and reservations involved. We were very fortunate to find three individuals that bought the West Side and are preserving the majority of the West Side, or the concession in one house. So if you drive down the West Side property, the only thing you'll see in the future is one mini driver. That's it. And those families have elected to keep the fields and retain what they want to maintain with those people. So the energy now is on the East Side, and I don't need to convince many people about why it makes a lot of sense, but I just want everyone to know the ground swell of support has been overwhelming. You've seen it from, and he knows it, have been sent out. We're seeing not just from Situud and Cohasset people, from people outside the area that have lived here in the past and anything else. So we're very enthusiastic about it. We think it makes sense. I'm a developer. I'm very pragmatic. I actually think we can do this. We've already got some money ready for it to start to see money to start this private progress. Within the CPC, they asked us to see if there was a way to connect the parcel to the Hubble Reserve. There is one large parcel between it. We're in conversation with that landowner. But last evening, I had a conversation with another landowner on 54 Border Street, and he has pledged, if his land is walkable, he will pledge a walking trail to connect Hubble Reserve to Lake Huron. And that actually was something that was important to CPC. It's quite a drop-off, and with all the rain, we really couldn't walk back there, but we're going to hire a engineer to go back there and look at the survey states out there, and hopefully there's five feet on the unit to walk to connect these two parcels. And that would be, I think, a tremendous asset for the county. I did have one question on the bona fide offer. We agree that it's bona fide. We had one of our board members, she was a board member, she's a Gulf Association member, she's a boarder. She went through a trial case law. It says you could outcontingency then, so that's fine, so the clock is ticking. My question is, is what if the offer that's currently in part of the, the $2.36 homes, if he goes through his permitting process and for some reason call it, what if the stating was incorrect? It's actually happened. There was restrictions in South Dakota. What if he comes back and says, I can only get five houses, goes back to the Bleke family and says, I can only get five houses, therefore I'm changing my offer to 2.0 or something. What happens if the town's right of first refusal?
I don't believe he can.
Can he?
I don't believe he has a bona fide person to sell, and he will buy the property without a contingency on the number of lots he can get.
That's what he's telling you now, but he doesn't, I understand it, because I have the, I have seen the offer, and I think it's public now, so maybe we can.
Yeah, I'm good.
It is public.
Is there a financing contingency in there?
Yes, I believe there is.
So financing contingency means that he can go up to the day of closing and say, I can't get a bank account. He might have gotten all his money today, but a financing contingency is actually the one contingency that, because it catch up already. You can take out permanent contingencies, you can take out a binding contingency. If you have a financing contingency, what you need is a bank or a friend of yours, who's a mortgage loan officer or connects a paper, to say, you can't finance it. So if that's a full contingency, which again, we understand is fine, we're not arguing that this is not a bona fide offer. My question then is, I've been in real estate for a long time, and if you look at this property and I can build 100,000 square foot of office building, I pay that. But if I want to go through the permits and approvals, I can only buy 50,000 square feet. I'm not going to be a seller for what I can build a pound of. So if he can only get three lots or four lots, I bet, I don't know if he's here today, he's going to pay 2.3 if he does. I'm asking a question. If he goes back to the Bleke and renegotiates the offer that's on the table, what happens to the town's right of first refusal?
I would defer to council, but I would think they would have to sign a new PNS and then come back to the town again.
Or have an amendment to PNS or?
The PNS, as it stands now, does not have any permanent contingencies in it. So if he cannot get what he anticipates, he's made a decision that he still thinks that property is worth $2.35 million, and has signed PNS to purchase it for that price without any further contingency in it.
So my question, if the price changes?
The price can't change without him being in violation of the PNS.
I believe the PNS allows him to withdraw if he is unable to get financing.
That's the only thing, the finance.
So then if he wished to then purchase it at a lesser price, I believe it starts the process again.
I would agree with that.
May, would you identify yourself, please?
Sorry. Karla Dean O'Donnell, Council for Lionshead.
So.
And former town council, Paige, to the town of Situud.
Right. Thank you.
You can have this for you. This is the PNS?
Yeah.
This is it. If he does not meet the PNS, he can withdraw. The deal's off. He makes another offer, starts the process again.
So can I ask a question through the chair to Mr. O'Donnell? So if the purchase price changes at all, you're saying the town's right of first refusal is being right there?
Correct. Yes, I am saying that, Mr. McGoldrick.
That's good news. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Obviously, there's a lot going on. The website will be out in a couple of weeks. Fundraising, very serious.
McGoldrick.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McGoldrick, could we have your address?
107 Parrish.
Thank you.
Golf Association's address is 1PLX 24O.
Marla? May I ask a question?
Yes.
Point of clarification. Marla, are there two fundraising efforts taking place, or were you referring to the Golf Association fundraising effort?
We are jointly working together.
So working together through the 501(c)(3) Golf Association?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
So for example, if funds are received on the Golf Association for this separate S program, if we're not successful, let it happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew? All right. I think that probably does it for tonight. We have a process that we do have to go through, and I will personally say that I hope that you're fundraising from all the people from out of town who want us to spend our money on this, because it would be very helpful. I know that there's a lot of people in Cohasset who are extremely interested in this property, and in fact, a lot of people think the property is in Cohasset. So just make that fundraising pitch for you. Any, anyone else?
I believe it's on the plane of an agenda for Thursday night.
So mark that down, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to go to yet another meeting. Are they remote still, or are they?
No, I believe they're personal.
They're personal, yeah. We still have some on remote only and some in person, so.
I spoke with the planning board today, and we will be in this room, and the agenda is posted. It's on the agenda.
Great. Thank you. All right. We have a discussed vote, an outdoor entertainment permit for 20 Wood Island Road. That's in that neighborhood, isn't it? For Chris Duffy. Thank you.
Hey, come on up. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Do we even know what agenda? So Wood Island, pretty place. Wood Island is a very pretty place.
It sure is. That's why we chose it.
So would you tell us what you're doing?
We're doing a.
On Wood Island, the date?
A wedding reception July 31st.
Okay. And you're having outdoor entertainment?
Yes.
What time?
Yep.
The time? 6 to 11?
6 to 11, yep.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Do you know you need to notify the Butters?
Yep, I got the list.
Not that there are all that many of them out there, but.
Yeah. I got the list earlier today.
Okay. Very good.
Just, what type of outdoor entertainment?
Wedding reception.
No, 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 I know, but.
A band?
Is there any music?
Yeah, a band.
Okay. Is it acoustic, rock? Just trying to get an idea of the amplification of sound.
We're still working on the playlist, but it's a.
Is it a DJ?
No, it's a band.
Okay. What kind of band?
That's a legit question, for example.
Because one of the biggest concerns that we get is noise.
It's like a seven-person band, so whatever type of instruments.
Okay, so pretty good.
Guitar.
Gotcha.
Bass, I don't know.
No, no, no.
Have you chosen who they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, hi-fi.
Hi-fi?
Yeah.
Yes. Mrs. Canfield. All right. So sound there carries like crazy. So you haven't talked to your Butters yet, though?
I just got the list today.
Okay. Getting married in 11 days, so just glad to have you.
Yeah, no, I know. Pressure's on.
I'm sorry, what was the time till 11?
6 to 11.
Right. Okay. Anyone else?
May I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
The band is hired for what time to what time?
6 to 11. 6 to 11.
All right. Because this is just, it's the entertainment permit, so I didn't know whether they're starting at 6 and ending at 11, or, okay. Okay.
Andrew?
No?
Andrew?
No, I'm good. I'm fine.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Uh, move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Chris Duffy for wedding reception with a band to be held at 20 Wood Island Road on July 31st from 6 to 10, 11 PM. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. Motion made by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Have a wonderful wedding.
Thank you very much.
Chris, are you the one getting married?
I am.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations. Enjoy.
Awesome.
He looks calm, cool, and collected, right? So, the next item on our agenda is the acceptance of a donation, the Beautification Commission. I hope I get this right, Kayden Lavangi?
Yeah, Kayden Lavangi with us.
Okay, did I see Donna Banger here?
Yes, and it's Donna Hopper.
Oh, yes, sorry. I recognize you. I should recognize you, I'm sorry. So who would like to speak?
Donna is going to speak.
Okay.
Well, Donna is still a person who is making sure that Ship Shape Day moves like, you know. Okay, you have the, here I just show you this adorable donation that the kids gave in this box.
Here's it alive? It's a turtle.
Oh, that is so wonderful. I wanted to buy one, but I couldn't figure out how to do that.
They, they only sold them at Gates School Cafeteria. These were eighth graders at Gates School who came up with this plan. I can't describe it, I can't describe the purpose. I just know that it involved cleaning the beaches and they wanted to raise money for the purpose of cleaning the beaches, which they have then decided to donate to Ship Shape Day.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, that's what's going to give her, yeah.
Okay, it says, Kayden Lavangi and some of her eighth-grade classmates organized a group to do a Gates Middle School civic engagement project. They interviewed residents to see what was important to them and found that Ship Shape Day was a popular topic. They organized a fundraising project for the Beautification Commission's Ship Shape Day for the purpose of cleaning up the beaches in Situate. The group located bracelets made from recycled plastic from the middle school. They sold the bracelets at Gates Middle School and raised funds to donate to the Beautification Commission for Ship Shape Day to clean up the beaches. The group raised $472.40.
Wonderful.
Hey.
And the funds raised will have a direct impact on the cleanup of Situate's beautiful beaches. Kayden Lavangi's group members are Ashton Seymour, Grace Single, Drew Johnson, Jet Rame, or Rem, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Carolyn Good, Sandra Hayes, Hannah Dwyer, Darby Carmody, and Tessie Murphy. If you know any of those parents, you can congratulate them. On behalf of the select board, please accept our thanks for your generous donation to the Beautification Commission and for volunteering their time. Thank you also to the Gates Intermediate School staff and students who are donating to this worthy cause. All of these young people are, none of them were available to come here tonight. It's summer. You know, they all read their school emails. Pretend they don't have them anymore.
It's okay.
And they're all busy doing other important things. So I want to accept this donation, this wonderful donation on behalf of the hundreds of people who come out on Ship Shape Day to clean up Situate. And not just beaches, but all of our, all of the areas of town. Ship Shape Day started, you know, in the 60s because some individuals wanted to make the town look better. And that has evolved today to the Beautification Commission. And it's not just to make Situate look better, but it's because of the environmental impacts as well with the beaches and marshes and streets of trash and litter. So we're very gratified that these young people have embraced the Ship Shape Day mission and are very grateful for this donation. We promise to apply it to a purpose that meets their objectives for their study.
And if I may add?
Yes.
One of the aspects that was very exciting about the trash that was collected this year is that it was shipped off and turned into electricity.
Yes, all the things that can't, that's what happens with Situate at the transfer station, right? It's either recycled or it's burned for electricity. Yes.
Very good. Well, I have to say that donation is close to your entire budget, isn't it? What is your, what is your whole budget?
For Ship Shape Day.
No, no, for the whole Beautification Commission.
Oh, oh, it's, it's, it's close to 29,000.
Oh, all right. Sorry.
And, and that also includes the care of the railroad islands, the, the islands that are at intersections and all of the special projects that the commission has been taking on. So, and, and then of course, the adopt-a-lots that, that require funding for, for planting all of these, these areas and then the merchant program. So there are a number of different programs that we are having.
Well, you're a very active committee and I have to say the front of town hall is especially beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
It really, it's made a big difference.
Yeah.
So we do appreciate everything you do and it's really nice that these kids decided to do this fundraiser for a specific purpose and we really appreciate the donation. Does anyone want to say anything? Anyone?
I'll make a, I know many of those girls, so my daughter's in the eighth grade is with them, so I want to thank them all. Great initiative, donating to a great organization where it's going to actually be put to use and they'll see it. So kudos to all of them and all their families. So, thank you.
Well, I'd add, it'd be really great if the board could send a thank you to each of these youngins for, for taking the initiative.
I know as the current chair, I will be sending those out, but I don't have their addresses. So the plan right now is to send them to the middle school. And we have been sending notices on an ongoing basis, including to the fourth-grade students at the Cushing School who put together this wonderful video about how to eradicate invasive plants. You can see it on our website, but everybody is getting not only a thank you one year, but we keep on reminding people how we have used their money once it's over.
Send it to the high school because they're all.
Yeah, yeah. Well, but, but I think this was the, uh,
Eighth grade, but they're-
This was the eighth grade.
Yeah, they all moved up to ninth grade.
I know.
They won't be there.
All right. So anyway, we are going to send it to them as a group.
Right?
Yeah.
Maybe they can walk it down from one building to the other. I'm a, love a motion.
Oh, you do? Okay, good, good. And then I will take this and you'll see if you can get it in the mail or also. Ruth is right back there. Waited, waited for you to get her that.
If you could just email it to her, I'm sure she'd appreciate it.
Strong supporter of-
Yes, yes, we know that.
Everything that's good in Situate.
Everything that's good. Nothing that's bad.
A great appreciation to Lorraine for she had to do some really hard work to make this all come together tonight. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Lorraine. All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Motion?
That the Situate Select Board accept a donation of 700, I'm sorry, $472.40 on behalf of, to benefit the Beautification Commission.
Second?
Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much.
Do we get the cash to Nancy Holt like this?
Yes, I'll take it.
Oh, oh, that's, that's good. Thank you, thank you.
Nancy will keep her eye on it. Are you kidding me?
Yeah, it was really good. I love it.
A little dicey, but. All right.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, I see Barbara Roberts coming up. I think you're Barbara, yes?
Yes. People follow me sometimes. They send someone else.
No, no, no. It's me. We're here to discuss a block party.
Yes.
At Prospect Avenue on September 11th.
It's actually the 26th.
Okay. So Barbara, would you like to tell us what you're doing on the block up there?
Um, we're just having a neighborhood get-together and gonna have pizza and Wilbur Wheels and visit.
Great, great. You're having entertainment, I assume?
Uh, don't have any scheduled.
All right.
Um, you know, it might just be the old iPhone, you know, on a-
iTunes, whatever.
Yeah, whatever. iTunes thing, yeah.
That's all I know.
Yeah.
So, does anyone have any questions? If this is a block party, by definition, you've invited all the neighbors.
Exactly.
So the butters will be-
All know.
They all know already.
And they will be coming.
Uh, just a technical question. Do they need to receive a letter in the mail or whatever we do for butters for events like this? All right, okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No, from three to eight. Three to eight, right?
Uh, yeah. Yep.
Does the fire department or the police, anyone need to be notified?
Yes, so it's pending department.
All right. I have to admit, I didn't read all my material tonight, so.
Everybody's notified and we will notify them on a Friday. And they have put together comments. We have four to Miss Roberts.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you intend to close the street?
Yes.
Does anyone want to highlight, or highlighting, do you want to do that? Fire, DPW, what is?
Do you like a motion? Yes, please.
Move to grant a block party permit to Barbara Roberts of 15 Prosperk Avenue on September 26, 2021, from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM, pending departmental review for comments and approval.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have fun.
Yes, we will. I know, September. All right, we're now with Mr. Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director, to discuss vote, DPW contracts.
Good evening. It's always the most exciting part of the meeting, right?
It is.
DPW contracts.
You hear about tractors and trailers and chemicals.
All, all good stuff.
Yeah.
Back two town meetings ago, the first contract was for an Autocar yard spotter. That's the small tractor trailer that's used to pull in and out the trash trucks from in the lower area.
Otherwise known as a yard jockey?
Otherwise known as a yard jockey. We've done our homework.
Making sure it's the same thing.
We've done our homework. So we've had a lot of trouble finding one of these new because we have companies like Amazon coming in and buying up hundreds to thousands at a time for their main facilities. So we were able to get one through Sourcewell. It's still going to be a while. We're probably not going to see it until, I don't think it'll go into production until probably December or January. But we've put an order in. Sean and I went down, we looked at one. There's one at a facility in Providence that makes all the mulch. So that's the replacement for the vehicle that we have down there. And we did some, some research on it and had the guys take a look at it and everybody's pretty comfortable with it.
So that is a used vehicle?
Brand-new vehicle.
Brand-new. I, I thought it was down in Rhode Island already.
No, we went down, there was one, the same model in Rhode Island. We went down to inspect it to see if it'd fill our needs.
Because I guess used vehicles are more expensive to buy now.
That's what I'm saying. Hopefully, you know, it's, it would be in the queue probably for December or January for, in the factory. But, you know, hopefully they got all the chips and everything they need for it.
Questions from the board? No?
One quick question. So it's $120,000. Does it do any other functionality during storm or anything? So it just needs that horsepower to pull that heavy thing?
It's the horsepower to pull the trash out, yes.
Any other questions? Nope. Do I have a motion?
Move that select board award a contract to purchase a 2022 Autocar Yard Spotter truck to Anderson Motor Inc. for under $19,614.87.
Motion by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0, motion carries. Thank you.
Kevin, what was allocated for that?
120.
Excuse me? 120?
Yeah.
Yes.
That interesting.
Came right in, under the wire there.
Believe me, Nancy, Nancy was on my case. Would you buy this truck? Would you buy this truck? We had a hard time finding it. We really did. And, um-
Can't even get a car, never mind a truck right now.
We, we really were, you know, killing ourselves to get it. And we're purchasing it through Sourcewell, which is a Minnesota-based consortium, but we're buying it directly from Autocar. We're not buying it from the used car dealership in Providence.
Oh, good.
So that's, that's how that worked out.
Thank you. Well, it's, I know it's similar. Next, the, the treatment of copper at the wastewater treatment plant.
So this contract is for the chemical which is called Metclaire by GE Betts. That's the product that we place in the treatment process to remove copper from the sewer discharge. We were able to get our copper down by putting this in place and this is a contract to continue purchasing the material for the next basically three years. We've got them locked into a price, if it works out.
Anyone?
Yes. Wasn't the original contract, didn't this have, this is the extension? Wasn't there an extension of it, an option to extend it? So this is the extension, not a brand-new?
This is a new, this, this is a new contract that may be renewed up to two years. So the max we can do on a contract is three years. So the average use is about $38,000 a year in chemicals. So it would be for the, up to three years.
Just a comment. We looked at solutions for this that were millions of dollars. So if we can get away with $38,000 a year, that's a, a big win.
Yeah, it, it really is.
Good job.
Yeah, I remember that being a huge, about eight years ago down on the treatment plant. It was like pulling your hair out worried about what it was going to cost to do that. So that is good news. More?
Nope.
Question? Andrew?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Motion?
Move that the select board award the contract to supply Metclaire 2,405 to the Situate Wastewater Treatment Plant to GE Betts, Inc. for not to exceed the amount of 38,000 annually. May be renewed for up to two additional years.
Second? Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next?
Great. So the next one is a design and engineering contract. As discussed with the board a couple of meetings ago, we talked about going out for design engineering services for Humrock. And these are the results of what we did. We reached out to five different design firms and received the following prices and did an independent survey for the permitting for choice in evaluation of the different firms that we did receive proposals from. Our best proposal, we thought, was Environmental Partners. That's the same firm that did Cedar Point. And we had very good luck and good results from that, especially they're working with the residents. We added the bids up and they're pretty close. Our low bid was Weston and Sampson, but they didn't do a full survey. We would actually like a full survey on this and that was one of the requirements of the RFP. So we almost could have disqualified them, but we didn't. We reviewed it. But we think the survey is important and the value of the survey was about $95,000. So if you added the survey in, you're looking apples to apples with the Environmental Partners project. And Ty and Bond came in high.
But there's 200 grand of construction admin on one and none on the other.
So, um, that was for Ty and Bond.
Yeah, so that's why there's so much more.
They were, they were significantly higher, correct.
So Engineering Partners isn't doing any construction admin?
No, that's incorporated with their bidding services for the construction administration and the costs are also in their construction oversight.
So we're getting the service, we're just-
We're getting the service. The way they, the way they put their price structure when they replied it, it was included in the design and permitting, I believe. So it just wasn't broken out.
Thanks.
And it's probably like a couple pages of the cost breakdown. We tried to simplify it as much as possible.
Questions from the board? Tony, you already?
Yeah, just what did we allocate for this?
Do you remember the allocation? It was 800?
What was the allocation at town meeting you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. 800,000 and it's in at?
Four.
Four, something. That's good.
Big win.
Hey, the little man.
Ty, Ty and Bond read the warrant.
The only comment I'll make is that they, they did do a really good job with managing the residents through the process. And that could have, could have gone a very sideways without that. And I would imagine that would be a very useful skill in this project as well.
Well, with Environmental Partners, we requested the same team that was out at Cedar Point to work at Humrock. So.
Did they agree?
Yes. Then we made that contingent upon awarding and said, you know, we're in there. But that was one of the things we brought up. In a lot of the construction oversight, our cost estimates were, were actually, it's a unit price. Just to keep everybody equal, we estimated a 38-week schedule of how long it would take to do the water lines. It could take longer, it could take less, but that's just ballpark funds so that we, we could, you know, have apples to apples when we compared everybody. Some people thought it'd be more, some people thought it'd be less.
Sorry. It's my chair. If it goes beyond that 38 weeks, are there costs that are built in to cover that?
We have a unit price set. There's a unit price. We establish unit prices with each-
Instead of, okay, sorry.
With each contractor. So if it went 39 weeks, we have a price for one week.
Okay.
So you can take the numbers in the construction oversight column, which is the second to the right, divided by 38, and that gives you the weekly unit cost for the construction administration crew.
Okay. So we'll have extra in our allocation to cover that if that happens.
Well, we had the $800,000. We hope we're still within, well within that budget.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Andrew?
Well, this is great.
Do you have an idea when this might start?
Um, they will have to start the design. As I said, there'll be a full survey out there and
Well, the reason I'm asking is because once you show up with people with flags and all kinds of stuff, people start saying, what's happening? What's going on? When is it going to happen? Is it going to happen in the summer? Are they going to be able to get down the street? Blah, blah, blah. So I guess the question I have first of all is, are the people in Humrock aware that this is going to happen?
We're going to surprise them.
Good.
As much as possible.
Not?
But no.
They love surprises in Humrock.
No, we don't like surprises in Humrock. We really don't.
No, once, once we put the contract out, we will start some outreach and get people involved. And the money hasn't been allocated yet to do the construction. This is just for design. So if money was allocated at the next town meeting or from other sources, then it would go forward. If it's pushed off a year or whenever, whenever the funds are available, that's when the project will go out to bed.
And this is water mains, right?
It's water mains.
Yeah, so let's just make sure that we do all that communication upfront again. So, because it's a big project. We know what our friends in Humrock are like, they're very particular about their roadway and their access. So let's just make sure we stay ahead of it.
Some of them could be thrilled because the water lines-
Most of them will be, yeah.
When we get down to Central Ave are legitimately where people park and they're parking over their water, water connectors and everything else. So we'd be able to pull the water main back as well as make some significant improvements down there.
I'm all for it. Just want to make sure we communicate upfront.
Well, I think some sort of communication about, this is the beginning of this process. This is what you'll see people doing. This is the timetable in terms of this part of the process. And then to explain that in order to actually accomplish the project, we're going to have to go back to town meeting to get an allocation to build it. But whenever you show up with flags or any, people in green jackets and hard hats, you know, immediately the rumor mill starts going that whatever's going on. So, any other questions?
I'm from Humrock. I'm letting everybody know right now.
They're doing it to us again.
So he's a choker in the crowd.
And that we care. We care. We care. We care about what happens there, and we care about people knowing what's happening there, so...
Tom's going to close the bridges.
Yeah. Now they'd probably say yes.
Going to need a passport to get over there someday. Any other question?
Would you like a motion?
I would. Thank you, Tony.
Move the Select Board award the contract for engineering design services, permitting and construction oversight for the Humrock water main design to Environmental Partners for an amount not to exceed four hundred, four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second? Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last contract is the bidding services for gasoline and diesel through Dennis K. Burke.
Any questions about gasoline and diesel? Would you like a motion?
I would.
Move to award contract for the purchase, purchase of gasoline pursuant to state contract E and E four eight and Ultra Low sulfur via pursuant to state contract E and E four seven. Dennis K. Burke at two eighty-four Eastern Avenue, Chelsea, Mass. For a period of August first, twenty twenty through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for sum not, total sum not to exceed four hundred thousand.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cafferty.
Thank you very much.
Also, kudos, guys. Last night, a bunch of people saw the work you did on Concord Fields, and they said they looked spectacular, so...
Oh, excellent.
Pass it along to...
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
So now we're moving on to the interviews for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I see Chris Karsha here. And am I assuming you're Justin Marks? Maybe you can both come up at the same time, if you don't mind sharing the table here.
So, the Zoning Board of Appeals. I had to actually ask Jim exactly what they do. Apparently, when you have any issue related to a piece of property that you would like to change something about, if it's not conforming, you have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. In addition, they do hearings on a whole host of other things, but it's... I, I looked at the zoning board, the zoning bylaws, and it's like a hundred and seventy-nine pages?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's big. And it's a big, important committee because, you know, people want to be able to do with their property what they want, and they can't always do it, so they have to come to people like you to ask you, you know, if you'll give them a variance or if you'll help them, you know, work through what the issues are. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with Chris. I know Chris, I think everyone here knows Chris from the Capital Planning Committee. He's been on it for, what, seven years? Or it feels like fourteen?
Eight, nine, fourteen, twenty-six.
It's, it's a very important committee, and we appreciate the fact that you've been serving for so long. And I will say that if zoning is a committee that needs attention to detail, you have a good background from Capital Planning because it's a lot of detail. So, every year they get a book that's about this thick.
Yes, we do.
So, would you like to tell us the board about yourself, your background?
Let's see. I have lived in Situate for over, I think, twenty-five years now. I'm third generation in my house. My father bought my house in nineteen fifty, so I get deep roots here. Watching Situate grow over, over the years, you kind of cringe at some things and pray some others. So, in the past few years, I have wanted to kind of figure out what I'm doing in my next twenty years. My goal is to become a building inspector either here or somewhere. Recently, I was offered a job as an inspector, and it said I was woefully underqualified because I have no zoning background. When I heard the zoning board opened up, it's who I had. I've been a builder in town for thirty years. I have experience, I am familiar with the zoning bylaws. I've never had to come before the board for anything. It's not what I did, do with my garden. But I think my experience on capital planning will help as far as just knowing how the town runs and how things work, and knowing people and, you know, being able to talk and communicate with people, I think helps.
Great. The board?
Sure, I can start.
Sure.
I've known Chris for, how long? Ten years or whatever? So, if I were to describe Chris, initially, he was one of the people that was out there questioning stuff that was being done. But then, unlike many others, he got involved, and he threw his hat in the ring, and he got his hands dirty, and he learned about what was going on, and he served on committees for a long period of time, probably longer than he wanted, and is a very hard worker, knows a lot about the way the government works now because of all the time here, and he's, he's dedicated. You know, this, you know, Karen underestimated or understated what ZBA is probably one of the toughest committees to be on.
Yeah, I didn't want to scare him.
Well, we got him in the room.
I don't want to scare him.
So, it needs attention, it needs hard work, it needs, you know, someone that's going to pay attention to the details. It's two alternate positions, as Karen just told me, so there's a learning curve that you can get involved. But it's, you learn a ton about the town, and it's very important decisions go through that appeal process. So, Chris, I, I think you do a great job, and I think you've done a great job on the stuff you've done, and, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad you got involved all those years ago.
I was also told I am planning on continuing on capital planning for the foreseeable future.
He's a glutton.
I told him I would oppose him going on the ZBA, meant him coming off capital budget.
Threatened with what he harmed. So, yeah, and I plan on continuing there and, you know, moving forward with it on the board. It's, it's one of those things that interests me more than, more than financial stuff does, but...
Jim, can ZBA serve on two boards?
No prohibition.
Because his board is appointed by the moderator, right?
There's just, there's no prohibition about serving them all.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes. Generally speaking, both, thank you both very much. Both backgrounds in construction, I want to get more about you shortly, but your backgrounds are actually very similar. The, as Tony alluded to, so this committee is, is sort of the last, I don't know, sandbagged front in front of proposals. When somebody wants to come to the zoning boards, because they, they want to do something that isn't permitted, basically, under our bylaws, and you have to look at what you, what is allowable under the rules to bend, basically. I guess that's the best way to put it. But just, you can't just say, "Well, I don't like it." You have to do, you know, so you... I know that, Chris, you, you demonstrated by far, you do your homework and all of that, and it's super, there's a lot of prep work on this, so mindful of that, you know, going forward, that this is, this is not a show up at the meeting and say, "Hey, what's going on?" Kind of many, it's very important. Just so that and two, one overall, and then a question for Chris, is, you know, the whole, a whole specter of forty B and the zoning board can very much say, "No, we're not going to do it." And, and as Jim has pointed out many, many times, then it doesn't really matter. The state will override it, and it can be kind of frustrating of that, but you have to understand what the limitations of the board's authority will be when it comes to those very large, sometimes uncomfortable proposals. But the question for you, Chris, is you are a successful builder in town, and you have a lot of clients here. And so the question is, obviously, you cannot work on any, you cannot opine on, you'd have to recuse yourself if you were devolved, but how are you going to address those potential conflicts?
Fortunately, unfortunately, and however you want to look at it, most of my jobs, my clientele, don't rise to the scale of going before the zoning. I do interior trim, custom overboard, custom cabinets, things like that, finished basements, and smaller scale stuff. I am a one-man band. Right now, my seventy-eight-year-old father is my helper. So, I, like I said, over thirty years that I've been in business, and my father and my grandfather, I don't think anyone ever gone before the zoning.
Great, I just want to, but, yeah, right now we have two attorneys and a businessman, business person, so I think some people with a construction background would be very helpful on this board.
Okay. More?
Sure. Thanks, Chris, for coming forward. I'm glad to hear that you're staying on capital as well. I'm not going to, I, I agree with Karen and Tony in both, all of the aspects of the Zoning Board of Appeals that they brought forward, because that would just be my one thing that I would want to raise with you, just knowing your actions on the, the capital committee is just to, that attention to detail is so important. And it is a lot of work. And have you watched any of the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings, so you know what sort of to expect?
Involved in, involved in one recently with, as her mother. I haven't watched a lot of them.
Well, there haven't been a lot on TV for the past years either, so, yeah. No, good point. But you're pretty familiar with the process and the type of...
Yes.
Okay. And I think your, you know, your experience reading blueprints and understanding setbacks and things like that will certainly be helpful. So, you have my support. I just hope, you're, you're up for it with that, with capital planning, two really detailed committees.
Yes.
But really important.
I hope, I hope to be training my replacement on capital planning at some point.
Okay. We'll help, we'll help recruit for that, too. That's all.
Andrew?
I, I could join and keep on heaping the praise, of course, on your patience, which I think is so important, as, as well as the attention to detail, just having the patience to go through some of those things as well. But I won't. And I'll actually ask you a question, I'll ask both of you, so what kind of, what would give you pause to serve? Is there anything that, that gives you concern, or are you just so gung ho that you want to go forward with this, or any aspects, geez, this might be difficult for me?
I, I've been wanting to, wanting to do this for the past three years, and like I said, it is a little self-serving for me because, you know, my career, I want my career path to head up into, you know, inspection and things like that. So, it's, that's the driving force behind it. There's nothing really that's going to say, "I don't want to do it." You know, I understand that there's, there's a lot to it, and there's, there's probably a lot more to it than it is capital planning. Capital, capital has always been seasonal, or real busy for three months or whatever it is. You know, this is the year-round thing. You know, it's something that's like my teeth.
Yeah, no. True, but I, I don't see ambition as a detriment at all. So, it's very good. So, that's great.
All right. Onto Mr. Justin Marks. Would you like to tell us about yourself, please?
Sir? I, I live in Humrock. I'm two doors before the gate, up on Fourth Cliff. Been there for about five years now, so I am new to Situate. I grew up on the Cape, so I always say that's like my little place. I work in the city, so it's my happy medium. There's no way I was going to the Cape, even though it was only found with... That being said, I love it up there. I feel very disconnected from the town being up there. And, you know, I don't get brainwashed by most of the residents there, you know? So I, I come with, with open ears and eyes. I come with a fresh set of eyes, in my opinion. I've been in commercial construction for about fifteen years now. My father's a builder on the Cape, so I grew up swinging a hammer. Did everything he could to not get me in construction, but here I am today. I'm sure you know, all the rain days, the snow days, the smell of diesel, never worked. I went, I do have a degree in policy studies. So the attention to detail, understanding, you know, policy and deep diving into everything is super important as it relates to the ZBA. I've been on the other side of the table with the ZBA, presenting my hardships to sort of give them an understanding of why we feel that, you know, bending the, the bylaws a little bit makes sense. I've, you know, fortunately, been successful in most of those, but I also understand to your, to all your points, it's a very serious, if you're going before the ZBA, it's very serious. So, you know, you got to have a good understanding. In most cases, I'm working with counsel, so it's sort of, we're not going in there too blind. You know, I think if you are to present anything, you've got to have, you know, an understanding that it's got to be very real and very reasonable. So I can appreciate that. And ultimately, like, you know, my biggest thing with wanting to be involved is, you know, I see Situate, it's a great town. I see a lot of movement, a lot of banter on Facebook, and it seems like an exciting time to be involved, as well as, as people move out of the city. It's a beautiful place in close proximity, so proximity. So I think you're going to see both residences, I mean, residents and businesses looking to, you know, open, build new, renovate, add on. So I think it's important to maintain the roots of Situate through those bylaws, but I think in most cases, they're, the way that they're written, I always look at it as a collaboration. So, you think you've got a hardship, you know, the, the way that things are written within the bylaws, sometimes there is some wiggle room there, so it's open to interpretation. So I think with the right presentation and the right understanding, you know, you're making a decision today that's ultimately going to affect a lot of decisions down the road. So you've got to be firm in your decision. You know, the attention to detail is super critical because people will use that in the future. So that's sort of, that's it in a nutshell.
Where do you do business now? Where's your...
So I'm a partner in a construction management company, general contractor out of West Bridgewater, Mass. So I don't...
Any business in town?
I don't, I don't particularly do any business in town.
Karen?
That was my question.
I did consider that, you know, it was, certainly came into consideration, and I don't foresee it being a conflict. Unfortunately, I'd love to work in my backyard, but I don't see that that would be something that we would be doing.
It's a nice ride over there from...
Yeah, it's a beautiful ride. I love my commute.
Yeah.
It's a great commute. I don't hit the highway, and it's relaxing. I've got two kids at home, so sometimes I take a walk. I go over to Julian if I need to.
You go the long way?
Yeah, exactly.
You won't tell your wife?
Yeah. And my wife would be out for a walk, and she'd be, "Why did you just..." So...
I hear you.
Tony?
Yeah, I guess, the only thing I'd add is, I guess, the wiggle room comment was like, just maybe...
No, fair enough. I, yeah, no, perhaps, yeah, there was a bit of casualness to there, but I think that...
Not, not casual, it's just, I think, Situate's a very desirable place to develop right now. And we've got people coming in from all over the place to develop this town and then leave. And, so, we want to keep Situate the way, the way the residents want Situate. So, I, I see that there's, you know, wiggle room in terms of reasonableness, but, but there are pretty straight laws, and they're there for a reason, and they're to be followed. And I know you know that, you know, it's, and I think you'd be good on the board, but I just, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're all aware of what's going on here, probably Chris better than anybody, with all the development that's happening here. And we want to make sure that this board is the final check, right? So the one that comes to you are the ones that are usually looking for a lot of wiggle are usually looking for a lot of wiggle room on something. And we just have to make sure that we understand what the law is, and understand the bylaws, and we hold them to that in, you know, reasonableness.
Absolutely.
So, and it's, it's a difficult process, you know, the, the cases take months and months and months to happen. So it is a commitment, because if you're on the board, if you're one of the the ones that are there for the first hearing, you're there for the rest of them, and they can take a long time. So you have to have patience, and you have to know what you're doing, and you have to be committed, which clearly the two of you are, so. I don't know, that's, that's my spiel, but I still, yeah, I, I do think you've got the background, you've got the right mindset, I think, to, to do it, but that's, that was my two cents.
Arthur said?
Mara?
Yeah, that well said, from Tony. You have great background, you know, from Gilbane to Gen Core today. You've got good professional training, which that, I think, is very important, especially with the number of questions and the type of folks that are going to come before the board. I would suspect that that training will come in very handy, you know, with those conversations as you evaluate the plans. So I just, you know, thank you for, for stepping forward. I know it's tough when you have two little kids to take, you know, a night away, weekly or, or biweekly. I'm not sure how often the zoning board of appeals, sometimes it's dependent upon, I would imagine, something that really needs to be passed. And I've, and I've sat through some of those meetings, and they can be, they can be contentious, they can be very detailed. So I appreciate you stepping forward and applying your professionalism during that time too, so, you know.
Thank you.
Best of luck in, in the vote, and I think you'd be great.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, no, I was actually thinking back to what you were saying. Again, some of those are very contentious and difficult, so. And again, I think, as you said, that there's, you have, you have the great background with that, and I would just raise that, I was, again, the pa, and again, the patience for some of these immediate, it's glacially slow movement on, on some of these issues, so. Which is deliberate for a reason, so. I guess, again, I, I think your, your outlook is, can be certainly very valuable, and I, I think you'd be great, but be prepared for, for some of those, so, that's all.
Okay. Well, if no one else has anything to say, thank you very much for applying. I know the ZBA is extremely anxious that we make these appointments tonight, if possible, so it is on our agenda to vote at the end of the meeting, and hopefully we will vote. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much to Ed Tibbetts, in particular, who has served, I think, 22 years on the zoning board of appeals, or in various town committees, and that is extraordinary, and he is leaving town, moving to New Hampshire, I believe, so, you know, thank you very much to him. And to Mr. Kavanaugh, I, I think he had realized he has other commitments, but we certainly appreciate the amount of time that anyone who serves on this board takes the time to serve on it, and is of great value to the town. So thank you very much, and we will now move on, unless anyone else has anything they'd like to say.
Just one thing Karen, you brought up. Ed, is there any way you can write him a letter of appreciation?
I am also, Karen, so.
Awesome.
I'll be here all night. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you guys. Have a great evening. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, discuss vote, Songwriters Festival kickoff party, 52 Oceanside Drive, September 17th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Karen Tondorf is the owner of Rivershed, and I believe that 52 Oceanside Drive is not her property, but she has permission from the owner to do this. Yeah.
She could not be here tonight, but she's moved to Vermont.
She what?
Moved to Vermont.
She moved to Vermont, okay. That's a good reason not to be here.
This is something that she, this is her second year she did private, she did have in 2019. And she would like to do this again this year.
All right.
So she's writing to the private residence. It's a VIP type arrangement, where she has a small party at this residence on the ocean. They have acoustic guitars in there, and she's applying for a one-day wine in office as well. Because it's open to the public, a one-day wine in office required.
Yes, good question, of course. Maran, was this the, the same spot that she did in 2019?
Yes, same spot.
I was confusing it with the event that they had at Rivershed, so, okay, thanks for that, that clarification.
How far down is that?
Well, I don't recall getting any complaints.
There were no complaints.
Yeah, from that.
It's acoustic.
Okay, great.
Between 10th and 11th Avenue.
Does anyone have any other questions? Let's do Google Map over there.
No.
No? Do I hear a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Kara Tondorf, Grateful Haven Inc., doing business as Rivershed for a singer-songwriter event to be held at a residence located at 52 Oceanside Drive from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-zero motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want me to do the one-day wine?
Yes, please.
Move that the board of selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to Kara Tondorf, Grateful Haven Inc., doing business as Rivershed for an event to be held on September 17th, 2021, from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. at 52 Oceanside Drive.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to discuss vote, the Fall 2021 Special Town Meeting. Mr. Boudreaux?
So as I discussed earlier, we always have a special town meeting in the fall. We look to make sure that we put the date, so it will be within the 120 days, should the board decide to exercise their option on the border street land. So that put our date at 10/26. You have a, kind of a preliminary list of articles that may be on the special town meeting warrant. We would set the date tonight for the 26th. We would open the warrant tonight, and we would close it at the next meeting. So we would send a memo out to everybody tomorrow that the warrant's open. You have until our next meeting to submit articles to the board for consideration.
Questions?
I'm just reading the potential articles.
Is that typical, that we'd only keep the warrant open for two weeks?
For a special? Yeah, we don't keep it open that long for a special, because we try to make sure that the special is only for things that need to be done, and things that would normally, we would put on the annual, get kicked to the annual, so.
Frankly, the annuals too. You don't keep that open too long.
The annuals usually open longer.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move that the select board vote to schedule a Fall Special Town Meeting for October 26th, 2021, or to a date in November acceptable to the moderator.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero motion carries. Thank you.
And move that the select board open the warrant for the Fall Special Town Meeting to be held Tuesday, October 26th, 2021.
Second? Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Next, the municipal employee disclosure for Sam Hayes and Seth Vifer. Seth, you're here. Is, is Sam Hayes here?
He is not here.
Okay. But he, he's going to be working something, sometime for you, but he works at the golf course.
Correct. So, so Sam Hayes used to work for Situate Television, pre-COVID. And then COVID kicked in, which lost a lot of employees on my side. So he took a job with, on Ian Kelly's side, Widows Walk. So now I kind of want him under my department as well, so we sparred, so, just combining.
It's routine. We do it all the time for recreation. If you're collecting a check for more than one department at the same time, you have to file a disclosure, get permission from the board, so. It's something we do routinely for recreation, with teachers doing rec camps and stuff like that.
All right. Well, this bring them to full-time employment, holistically, or?
No.
No? Okay. Motion?
I guess not. It's too bad. Did you have a question, Karen?
No.
Oh, okay, just, just being attentive. Good.
Move that the select board, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, have reviewed the disclosure forms from the following municipal employees who seek to provide personal services. This isn't right, is it? To Situate Recreation? Yeah, to Situate Community Television, thank you. The exemption under Section 20B is approved for the municipal employee Sam Hayes.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. I'll pick this time.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. All right. Next on the agenda, Nancy, are we really going to sell the Minut Fire Station?
The time has come, and it's up to you to decide.
And the, the senior center on Brook Street, we're really going to do it, huh?
Town meeting approved in Article 11 of the November 2020 Special Town Meeting to sell the old former Minut Fire Station that's on Mitchell Ave, and the now old senior center on Brook Street, and to use the proceeds from that sale to reduce the cost of the senior center and renovations to the Veterans Memorial Gym, to lower the impact to the taxpayers. So that being said, we have a note that is maturing in December for $2 million for that project. We would like to retire that note with the proceeds from the sale. To do so, we have to dispose of the properties. So there are two options for disposal. One is a public auction. The other would be a request for proposals. So you would put out a request for what people would do for the properties, and you could put restrictions on it. A public auction, it goes to the highest bidder. They have to abide by whatever the current zoning is for that area. So what we brought before you is I issued an invitation for bids for auctioneer services for the disposal of real estate in June. Received two bids. The positive thing right now is, before, when we sold the foreclosed property a few years ago, we had to pay the auctioneer 6%. Now, both auctioneers, their bids were buyer's premium, meaning the town will receive the full proceeds of the sale, and the buyer has to pay an additional amount when they make their purchase. So the two bids were 3.2%, and the other bid was 5%. The 3.2% firm was J.J. Manning Auctioneers, who's been in business for almost 45 years in Massachusetts. They're out of Yarmouth Port, and that's the one that is before you, to, was to award a contract to them if you choose to go forward with a public auction for these two properties. I gave you a couple of copies of not only their, their information, their bid, but also other properties that they have auctioned in some of their advertising materials. So you can see the, the breadth of what they do. They've done a lot of auctions for the state for D-Cam as well.
Did we receive the auction information on a separate cover, or, I didn't see it in the packet? So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it?
I don't see any.
While we look for it, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
So are we putting both properties up for auction, and if we are, when did we decide that?
Town meeting voted that.
Town meeting voted to allow the board to dispose of those properties?
Right.
So what's before you tonight is to dispose of them through an auction process and to hire this auctioneer.
Right. So have we talked about that as a board? Because what concerns me is that there were, there were letters received and sent to the board that there were stipulations for the senior center property to have some sort of affordable housing component into the purchase, you know, in the sale, when we sell the old senior housing. So if we auction that, we don't have that right, correct?
No, you wouldn't have that right unless it was recorded against the property, but is, was this a promise made, or is this some type of recording?
No, this was a letter that was received by us, by the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, as, as a request that as we think about the disposal of that property, that we consider it having a component of affordability, should it be sold to somebody that is a developer. So I guess my question is, is if we auction it off, do we lose that flexibility to put that type of a condition on it?
You're selling it to the highest bidder, under whatever zoning restrictions there are on it now. Both of those properties have a lot of constraints on what you can do with them, not just from a zoning standpoint, but from floodplain and, and some other issues, so. Going outside the footprints of those buildings to do anything else is, they're going to be sitting before Chris and our new zoning board of appeals members, because there's a lot, especially the old fire station. There's going to be a lot of relief that they don't need to do anything with that, but town meeting did not restrict how we're going to sell these.
I understand that.
I think what Nancy and I were looking to do was to maximize the return to the town, to save money on those, on those borrowings. If the board doesn't want to sell it that way, then we could do the old fire station. All we're doing right now is hiring the auctioneer and saying we're going to auction those properties. We can do the old fire station and wait on this. We just have to make some sort of determination sooner rather than later, so we would know what to do with that bond in the settlement.
Well, I'd like to open up to the board to discuss, because I didn't realize that we were just going down the path of auctioning.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Well, there is a substantial amount of development right now being planned with affordable components in it under the zoning board, under the planning board's new guidelines, including preliminary approval for 268 units to go forward, so. We're seeing a lot of that, small developments, which this would be, this would be-
Right, but we don't have anything for veterans, we don't have anything for school and fire. Like, you can designate housing within our town for specific groups, and these larger projects don't do that.
You can. If, if you wish to do something with an affordable component, I think the board needs to be aware you will not make money. You will be putting money up, like we did with Lawson Green, like I know Norwell did with their old fire station. It costs them almost $2 million for 40 units. We wouldn't get anything that big down there.
I understand that. I'd like other commentary, I guess.
Karen?
So, so the council naming building is zoned, completely residential.
I believe it's, I believe it's residential, yeah.
And it has a parking lot, is it a conforming lot?
No.
So any developer would have to lose the area anyway.
Matt, if you stayed within the footprint of the building, and just renovated the building and turned it into something else, if you want to make it, if it's residential, I, sorry, I had that written down, I forgot to bring it with me. But if it's residential, and you wish to just stay within that footprint and not expand it at all, then you don't need to go to the zoning board of appeals. You can get a building permit. The question is, is it in the floodplain? I know the parking lot is half off, it's the floodplain, go, go, would you need me to leave from that? But, you know, the nonconformity is mostly dimensioned in the building, so the sidelines, obviously we have plenty of room behind it going back. But to do anything, to make that building any larger, would require zoning board of appeals, yeah. Definitely nonconforming.
Andrew? Something? Anything?
I'm thinking. So it's, we know for a fact it's only residential, and there's no-
I'd have to go back and look in, or I had it when I, I forgot it. But I believe it's in the residential zone, yeah.
Karen?
Well, I don't want to, I have questions that aren't related to the concept of what we want to do with that particular site. I don't think we really, Mara wants to have that conversation, we haven't really finalized it. I mean, I think the site is tight. I think it's, the markets for a single-family home in that location would be very desirable. And I think it would be financially, I could, I don't, I'm not sure we'd end up with that many units if we went to try to use that for affordable, that's just my opinion, affordable housing site. So I would be in favor of trying to maximize the sale of that site in this.
Well, I mean, since Nancy's here all the time, I don't have to worry about bringing her back for another meeting. We can authorize going forward with the Minut Street Fire Station right now, and we can come back, let the board stew on the, on the old council age, and have a further discussion.
Well, it seems to me as though that's probably the key, is, do we want to maximize the amount of money, let's just look at Brook Street, to be able to reduce the, the cost of the senior center, whatever. On the other hand, it's certainly, the Affordable Housing Trust may want to look at this and see if they would like to put an application into CPC to provide some sort of, you know, we'd have to spend money on it. So the, the difference being, we're either going to make money on it, or we're going to spend money on it. And CPC does have money that could go toward affordable housing. And if we wanted to, for example, it's kind of a nice location for, you know, veterans, or, you know, older people who might want the access to the, it's in a great location. But as you point out, this is a hot market, and they're selling like crazy down there.
No, I understand.
So it's, it's a philosophical thing, I think.
Well, it's philosophical as well as, you know, resources, right? So the Affordable Housing Trust isn't in the business of building and managing housing, so we, they, we would have to go out and find a private partner, which we can do that, but it is a small, nonconforming lot, so you're not going to find someone that, it's going to come from their heart to do it, right? It's not going to come from someone that is going to look at it as a moneymaker. And there certainly are people out there that are very dedicated to providing veterans housing. So I would like to pause a little bit on auctioning off that, and go to them and see if there's some sort of desire, which I think there is, to kind of try to find a partner if we can. But certainly would love to go, you know, do the auction on the mine. I don't, I don't mind that, but-
I'm trying to go back into my memory, a group, one of the CPC people went up to Hangham-
He was a great spell in Hangham.
And they were, a group was doing this to benefit the veterans in Hangham. It was a similar type of a situation, so it's probably worth doing a little research into how they structured it and how they did it. So I'm kind of hearing from the board that unless anyone disagrees, that we would agree, we should probably go to auction?
I don't think so at all.
No? Okay.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think that's the first decision.
I mean, I think that's the first decision. When you auction a piece of property off, you get a low value for it. We know that...
Not necessarily.
Well, when we sold the animal, animal...
Shelter.
Shelter, building there, we had one bid, and it went for 200 and something thousand dollars.
Well, you can set minimum bids, right, on auctions? And you can reserve the right to not accept it.
Well, that's what I'd like to hear before we, you know, before we said, "Let's go to auction," and you lose complete control of the property. Where the other way, you can kind of, if you have an idea like Mara has, you can try and cultivate that first before you go to auction. You sell it and auction, it's gone.
Well, but as Jim points out, it still has to go through all the correct zoning, planning board, et cetera. And I'm only talking about the mine it right now. And I think right now, in this market, that an auction would be, unless people find that that property is simply, you can't do what somebody would want to do with it, because that's what I kept hearing over the years. Well, you can't do this, and you can't do that, and you can't, so I think that's why the town has just kept putting it off and putting it off, because I don't think anyone was planning on building another fire station out there, so...
And that's residential, there's floodplain there, that's definitely gonna need the Z.B.A. relief to develop that.
Yes. Ms. Canfield?
Touchdown a couple of these things. So, just to clarify, so the mine it would also go down if they were, if we were to take this part of the proposal, would pay down the senior center?
Yes, both would, so the, what's before you, what's before you tonight is just to award the contract to an auctioneer.
All right.
It doesn't necessarily mean you have to auction one or both properties, we'll just retain the auctioneer. I mean, the bid was that we were expecting to auction to, based on the town meeting vote.
The town meeting vote, both of them...
The town meeting vote was to sell or lease those two properties.
Both of them, though?
Both of them.
Okay, I missed that language, okay.
Both going to the senior center, though, it said at town meeting, I know the senior center one was, but I didn't...
Both of them.
I didn't realize mine was as well.
It was one article that, to sell those, because mine and fire station has been one of those properties that we have to dispose of, deal with, since I've been here, and I'm sure it was probably ten years before that, and nothing's ever happened.
If Jim could just speak to the difference that we need to touch on a little bit, why recommend auction versus a sealed bid, which the other way you could do it?
I think because the market is so hot right now. I think you get people bidding against each other for the properties, as opposed to just saying, "Well, I think it's worth this," and mailing it a bid.
And then, have we talked, and then the next step, if we were to approve an auction, we would talk about a minimum, because I agree, we need to set a floor.
Usually you base it on the assessed value.
We could certainly have the auctioneer, you know, up here before the board to talk about those things, if that's something that the board wanted to do.
Yeah, I think we'd have to see the final terms before we release to her.
Mine and fire station could be a neighbor, just wants to buy it, they just want to, they just want the property, they could buy it.
It could ask, and every dog walk, it's a kind of...
So, I think that's an easy one. The other one, you really can't do a lot with that mine it property. Do some sort of residential again, it's gonna need a lot of help from the zoning board of appeals. Senior center site, more opportunity to be creative than mine it, definitely.
I think what we don't want at the senior center site is seven condos being, you know, shoved into that area. So...
Yeah.
I think I agree, Nancy brings up a good point, we've been talking about this for twenty years, so the fire station one should probably, the market's hot.
It was one of the things the board wanted us to get, especially to...
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, I just wanted to put the brakes on this, because it was like, we're approving an auctioneer, and we're going forward on both, so I just wanted to put the brakes a little bit and talk a little bit more about the old senior center property.
Well, let's, as Nancy said, we're not auctioning the property, we're hiring the auctioneer, so let's award the bid to J.J. Manning for auction services for the town, and then authorize us to put the fire station out, and we can have a further conversation about what you want to do with...
I would appreciate that.
COA. At least it gets us moving, as opposed to, "What are we gonna do, what are we gonna do it now, it's before you and moving now, we gotta kind of deal with it."
So, we hire the auctioneer before we decide if we want to auction it?
No, because we're gonna auction the other one off, we're gonna do the mine it.
Well, that's what we're talking about, we haven't decided that yet.
That's what my plan would be, that you award the auctioneer and award mine it, and we'll hold up on the other one.
Okay.
Well, the auctioneer is obviously extremely qualified, he's released a backup, he writes a good paper, anyway, and I've seen their signs before, so that's what, I think the market is insane, and I know that there's, you know, I live around the corner from the station, and almost to God, for the last two years, that's all I've heard about, is "Come before town meeting, he's coming." So, you never know until the day, but I think that, given that and the number of brokers who knock on my door asking if we want to sell in our neighborhood, it's a good time, and I think we probably kick ourselves if a year from now, we're still talking about it. And I would support putting the mine it, hiring the auctioneer to start figuring out what the floor is and what the topic is. That's my two cents.
I'm good with that.
I agree with that.
So, do you want to discuss or bring it up to the Housing Trust?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sure, I can, yeah.
Because they can certainly help, I'm not suggesting they should run this property, but that...
No, but to identify potential partners, absolutely.
Yeah, especially the people in Hangham, the veterans people.
Yeah, they all, they all went on a tour of them as well.
Yeah, it was a tour, from our group, like...
Down on Fort Hill Street in Hangham.
Yeah.
Madam?
So, yes.
Madam Chair, in, I think in connection to what you were saying, I think what kind of feels off a little bit by some of this, and I agree, taking the pause and going with mine is that, it's almost like there's this, it's not a very holistic look at what we're doing. I mean, we think of the properties with Old Gates, Pier Forty-Four, this mine it station, this, the four properties, possibly, some people are talking about another school, another property, it's like, it just feels so disjointed. I'm not, I don't have a better answer than that, but I guess I just wanted to bring it up, that it seems at some point in the future, we may want to talk about a, I don't know, it just...
Maybe that's what a retreat is for.
Maybe.
And Mara just wanted to raise this. So, gentlemen and ladies...
I would disagree in one sense, in that the mine it fire station, the town's been looking to get rid of that forever.
Yeah, that one.
And the discussions on the COA were always, "What are you gonna do with the old building? We're gonna get rid of it." So, it was part of the plan that we were gonna get rid of these assets, so there was a plan, using quote fingers, for those buildings. So, the problem is, the town just ends up holding on, "Let's do a study, geez, can we do this, geez, can we do that?" And at some point, we gotta pull the trigger on something, so... But it was part of the plan to, especially the old COA, that was part of the entire discussion on the new COA, it was, "What do you do with the old thing, you know, it's, we're gonna get rid of it, it's not worth us holding on to, it's a money pit. I know the schools have made some use of it this summer as a place to get away and have meetings, they think it's great. They said, "Yeah, you can do that for the summer," but then we're shutting everything off, and we're gonna close it down, we're not gonna carry it too much longer." But, you know, the town is not a great manager of property, and we have too much property that we're trying to manage that's in bad shape, and so, I mean, I don't mind us waiting, you can get, put this before the board, kind of puts it before you, now, let's do something, but at some point, we're gonna have to pull the trigger and make a decision. I'd have to go back and look, if we wanted to restrict the sale to a nonprofit for affordable housing, I'd have to check, we'd have to go back to town meeting to make that, or whether the board could just do it as a fiat, I just don't know if...
Yeah, I don't think it was in the...
It was not in the original article, though.
It was not in the article.
So, would that have to be an article that we put on for the fall to say, "Disposal for the fall on your purpose?" I just don't know. And if you want to make it an affordable unit, Habitat for Humanity might, they usually pay a dollar, they don't pay much more than that, but they do new buildings, where they do renovations. As Karen and Mara said, there are groups that do renovations for veterans, so would you want to sell it to a veteran, have someone come in and renovate it? I mean, it is on grade, so, but it's kind of chopped up inside, you'd almost have to...
Oh, it needs major reno, no doubt, or tear down or rebuild, no doubt.
You have to got the entire building.
Yeah, of course, no doubt.
So...
Trust me, I'm not suggesting that it's in...
All right.
Well, I like the go-forward path that Karen Canfield mapped out, you know, I think we should move on mine it, and I'd like to, or what you mapped out. I don't mind awarding, I just want to make sure we're advised when we're auctioning off each property, and if we can have an opportunity to look at the Affordable Housing Trust option, appreciate that opportunity to bring it to them.
Like I said, we'll hold on, on the COA, we'll move on the mine it street if the board approves that, we'll get that going. And you know what, that'll tell us, is it a good idea, a bad idea, did we think we did well, did we not do well?
Yeah.
Want to take another approach. But as Karen said, there's a lot of interest in that mine it street fire station.
Yes.
One question, looking at the motion, is the contract would be for three years?
I wanted to give them a contract for three years. If we have anything else that comes up, there have been occasions where we've foreclosed on property.
Oh, okay.
Turned around and then auctioned it, there's been one of those since I've been here. There is a way for Pam to clear some of her tax titles, it's a land of low value process, which has been one of her goals, and I'm actually, I teach classes in that, so that's something that she and I are gonna work on. And if that gets approved, that could be ten to twenty properties that are land of, literally land of low value, they can't be developed, but butters might want them, and they have to be sold at public auction. There's no other way to dispose of them. So, it would just be easier if we had someone on retainer to do these for us, it doesn't mean that they'll have any work.
All right, so the vote that we're contemplating is really, is just to make them our designated auctioneer?
At the 3.2 percent buyer's premium.
And then, we don't have a vote on, should we then also...
Yeah, I would then ask the board to authorize the sale of the mine it fire station.
Okay, through the auctioneer's way, per...
To auction the mine it fire station.
And that's why there was like nothing after this particular item, because we knew there would be some discussion as to whether or not you wanted to proceed forward with those two properties in this manner.
Okay. I think that's two motions, would you entertain?
Would you mind? Yes.
So, move to award a contract to J.J. Manning Auctioneers of Yarmouth Port for real estate auctioneer services for a three-year period at a 3.2 percent buyer premium rate.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benjani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Do you like a second motion?
Yes, please.
Move that the board, move that the select board authorize our appointed auctioneer to prepare a proposal for the sale of, the auction of the mine it station on Mitchell Avenue.
Second?
Does that include, where's she gonna get the minimum bid and that sort of stuff?
A what?
Field come up with that?
Yeah, prepare a proposal for the auction, to be presented to the board for verbal.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benjani, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Nancy.
So, on to discuss vote naming policy for town-owned properties and facilities. Jim has done, handed out this policy to us at the last meeting, I believe, and because we had just received it, we couldn't vote on it, hopefully everyone's had time to review it, and at this point, I'd like to ask if anyone has anything that they feel should be added, deleted, modified? Okay, so Ms. Canfield?
I thought it was, I like it, it's pithy, it covers the stuff we talked about. The only thing that I, I didn't, is we, under process number three, it requires two notifications in the newspaper, and I thought, maybe, I was in another place we had this conversation, I thought that we had talked about, that basically that was kind of an archaic way to make, give notice to people, that we should, we should require electronic notice, whether it's on the website, or, you know, on our town Facebook, whatever it was, social media, that that was a more effective way of letting people know something was happening than sticking in, no offense, we're in the back of the...
Does anyone have any...
But does that require the legal notice of public notice?
I would just need some sort of language to take out, publish in a newspaper to say, publish on the town's website, post on the town's website and social media, something along those lines.
And see, I would be hesitant to take out the newspaper at this point, because there are still people who read those legal notices. I don't think it's a huge deal, but I think adding to the policy that it also so shall be published in social media, on the town's website, on the...
In addition to.
Facebook, in addition to. I'm just loathe while there's still people who get their newspaper and actually read it to...
What does a notice cost, what does a notice cost at the moment?
I mean, well, it's about $250.
So, it's a $500 cost under this policy, anybody that wants...
To the applicants.
Right, no, the applicants.
Which would make them think twice.
Right, make them think twice, but also could deter good proposals, too.
Well, local circulation also includes online circulations, Karen, so, Karen?
Sorry?
Local circulation also includes online circulation, so, I mean, it doesn't say just paper, so...
As hearing notice in a paper of local circulation, you could probably say, "And shall publish a public hearing notice in a..."
In a media, or...
The town essentially...
News.
...violates that require public hearing notices to be in the newspaper.
Yes, they do. Just like they still require us to pin up the notices.
Once we change the laws, we have to put it in the newspaper.
So, just put paper and other online media tools.
How about one instead of two?
Yeah, you can use one instead of two, but it does at least, they have to have a little skin in the game, too.
Right.
So, they have to be serious about this if they want to do it, as opposed to, "Hey, I had a good idea on that, let's name this after..."
Karen Connolly, right.
So, you take, you could take our number four, which is the second notice, you just have to have the one notice.
Right, yeah.
And remove four, and then just add, and shall be widely distributed through electronic or social media.
Yeah, just add that in somewhere. And I would also say that the document needs to be overviewed and consistent for Board of Selectment, Select Board, because it's used interchangeably from paragraph to paragraph, so we just need to, to, just, just in a couple places.
Thank you for that.
Twenty-six years of writing.
The Board of Selectmen, the first...
No, get over it, Jim. No, just kidding.
Just takes a while.
It takes a while, I know.
You start telling the... When you get those, I can't make changes on this, so...
I still say it, too, so...
Yeah, I know.
Okay, thanks.
We can change the document, there's a thing called find and replace.
Yep, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, it doesn't let me, because I don't have the actual document, I won't let me change it on this.
Just get your whiteout out.
Don't laugh, I have a friend who still uses that.
Any, Tony?
Yeah, well, there are a couple of things that I liked, and some of the other ones that aren't in here, I think we discussed before, I like the waiting period, so I don't know where we can incorporate that. The one in Evanville was a lot of time, wasn't it?
Like, seven years, I mean, it was a long time.
Well, that's not that, I think that it's reasonable to be in the three to five-year range...
Right.
Of waiting before we name something after the passing, so, does that make sense to anybody?
I don't know what the right number is.
I don't either.
Well, I think the whole point of waiting is, number one, a lot of the emotion has gone out of the passing of the person, so it's not quite as emotional, and I think we have run into situations here in town where everyone was so upset that something happened to someone, that there was immediate, you know, running around to get something named after them, and, you know, it's, I understand how people feel at that point, but I think that's why a waiting period is probably a good idea, but...
How about three years?
Three years?
I was gonna say one.
That's a long, I would say one, I was gonna say one year.
Yeah, if it takes one year just to...
Get a meeting with us.
Yeah.
Get on our agenda.
That's what I mean, so they have that one year to...
Split the difference, two.
Start the process, right?
Our Irish diplomat. Our Irish diplomat.
I'd like two, I mean, that's, it's still in people's memory, it's still within.
Where do we put that, in the process?
Yeah. Um, we got number one.
I personally like three, but I, does everyone think two's better? What do you think?
Yep, because I want one, so I'll go with two.
I would say the process should be.
I would probably put that.
Tony Vignani and then it's fifteen.
Under guidelines, above that.
Or you could simply put it as number one, under process, and then bump everything else down so that someone doesn't have to read through the whole process thing only to find out, well, I have to wait three years or two years or.
Well, I mean, above, under guidelines, you have what the person, or who the person would be, significant financial civic contributions, blah, 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 so I think it probably fits in there.
Yeah, put it under number one, and who have, you know, been deceased.
Well.
No, it's four, no, no application will be accepted within, until X number of years have passed. In the event, well, it has to, that relates to something.
I just want to play the devil's advocate, okay?
Right.
I'm with you under guidelines, just.
Let's just say we have a coach of X sport, and that coach has been coaching for 50 years. Do you want to make them have to be dead before you honor them? Or do you want to honor them before they go?
No, this is only, this only pertains to deceased. A live person could be.
All right, Tony gives us $10 million for the water treatment plant he might name it after him.
Right, that's a no brainer.
Yeah.
You pay for it when you.
Yeah, but you don't have to wait, you don't have to wait three years for that. So it only, is only relevant to, in the case of someone.
In passing.
In passing, I think.
I agree.
Win the Nobel Prize.
I mean, I don't mind that, I'm fine.
We can say some requests to be made in memory of an individual, something like that.
Any, any, any memorial? You can write those words. What's the number?
Two, is what.
Good.
Two?
Two.
Three's a little.
Two, because.
Looks like it gives a little time for fun.
Three's a little long, two is the time, yeah, you said, yeah, like you said.
The only other component that I, we talked about, and it's not in here anywhere, is the major fields in town that do a, a multi-naming opportunity, like a board or a plaque or something, as opposed to.
I'd like that idea.
The, Tony Vignani.
Yeah, I like that idea too, yeah.
The Tony Vignani track.
The Vignani dugout.
Well, to that end, we only really have two complexes right now, right? We've got Central Fields and we've got the High School. So could we just say that it is, it is our policy to not name any of the fields at either Central or the High School for individuals, but the town shall erect a memorial wall, whatever we want to call it, to honor those people.
I mean, I think, we talked about it the last meeting, I think that's almost like a separate policy. Because I, I need a lot more guidance as to what do you want to call it? How are you going to decide? Do you want to have something formal, or just want to leave it open? I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but I need a little, just a little direction as to exactly. Yeah, it could be as simple as the town shall erect at several locations around town, you know, a plaque.
Memorial boards.
Well, I don't want to say memorial, but a, a wall of honor or a wall of recognition.
Right.
Delining people who have made significant, significant, someone writing this down, significant contributions to X.
So could we adopt that as part of this policy to say?
I just think I need more.
Because we would need to price it out, like, you know, what the engraving is incumbent upon the quester or whatever, I don't know how.
What's the, what's the trigger?
Right, and how many people?
We could pick the sites in town that we think, like the Veterans Gym, for instance, at Old Gates. You could put a wall up there and you could name.
But, yeah, nothing in this proposal prevents us from doing that.
Right.
So that's, that's why, I'm with you, that's the beauty of it.
This is, this is naming property, things.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the problem is someone, it's very hard, it's very hard not to name something after somebody when someone comes before you to do it in a, in an emotional situation. And this kind of sets the path for things if there's fields that we think should be in moderation. You know, if somebody came in and there could be a situation where the whole complex over there would be named after somebody because it was just an emotional event. So I think if there are properties that we think that would work best on, it gives, you know, for instance, the Veterans Gym, there's generations of people that have done great things.
Right, I'm agreeing with Tony, this is, this policy is to name something after someone. And it attempts to give you a framework, step back from the emotional event, saying, well, we got to do something. And that's what this is, what you're talking about is something to recognize people's contributions to the town, or to recreation, or to whatever, which is not naming it after anybody. So it's, it's like a separate policy, we would say.
I agree.
And I'm saying, no, it's not. So I would say we would not allow someone to name Central Field after somebody, but we would allow someone to put a name on a board, a wall at Central Field.
Right, you're saying the same thing as Jim just said.
No, but it, I think it has to be part of this, otherwise someone's going to come before you and say, I want to name the new turf field, you know, the Sean Harris Football Stadium.
Well, because this gives people the impression that there is an opportunity to name a field after.
Well, there is, so why, why couldn't it be the Tom Harris Football Field? And then we also have a, a wall of recognition, and isn't it either or in my mind? You can have both. Because then you're additionally recognized.
I'm suggesting you can't have both. I'm suggesting that there is a wall and not a naming. But you could do both.
But then you don't need this policy, you just need a policy saying, we're going to have a wall of honor, a wall of recognition.
Well, on certain properties, you know, there's other ones that you can.
Yeah, I think this covers a lot of others. I think this covers a lot of, yeah.
Well, did you want to add, we have the exclusions, for example, Central Field.
I think that's where Karen was kind of going with, with that. And I don't, this is just be, you know, spitballing here, I'm not, I'm not. Someone suggested it, actually, someone said that J.L., who we just named a dugout after, suggested it years ago. And that it, it spreads well for many people that have contributed to something, as opposed to on that day, someone contributed to it, so.
Can't we just add under here, under renaming parks and recreational facilities, just 4.3 or 4.2A that says, that addresses something that, you know, that it's our, it's our intention, our preference, you know, to do.
Major pieces of property will be, that can be delegated to many naming opportunities or something?
Bring to multiple folks, right. Certain properties may have multiple naming opportunities, you know, at the board's discretion.
I think it's hard to, it's hard to show discretion when you have a passionate group of people in front of you that want to name a whole field after somebody unless it's already dictated that we've, we've thought about this and, and this one, and this one, and this one are multi.
And I think it's really, really, really difficult for people to say, no, I don't want to name this field after this person. I think it's impossible.
I don't, that's, just an idea that someone brought to me, so.
Well, let's, we can name a few, now, this is our only opportunity to talk about it. Whatever, if, you can always amend this later to add another field, if we said, okay, we forgot Central Field, but we think. So what would be your top three?
The High School, Central Field, so, and the Memorial Gym.
Well, Memorial Gym's already named, it's the Veterans Memorial Gym.
Right, well, what do we do if someone comes and says, you know what, Veterans Memorial Gym, that's kind of like a, you know, generic phrase. We want to name it after, well, some general, general, who's the general in town? We've got General Kelly, we've got some general in town. I mean, they could, right?
Yes, it does, but then you're sliding all the other veterans who.
Well, I think that's, I think that's the point that Tony's making, and the point that I'm trying to make is, is that we still have before us an application to name Central Fields after Ann Palmer. And I think that's what precipitated all of this, because we were all, you know, very appreciative of Ann and very appreciative of her family and her contributions in particular, but it kicked up this entire conversation about, well, what do we do? And so that's why we're here. And at this point, if we don't add something here that suggests that, that we are going to try to honor people through more memorial walls instead of renaming fields, or naming a field that doesn't have a name.
But, no, I agree, I think we can, I don't think it takes a lot to add in the, the recognition walls, and maybe that's what they're called. And maybe to Andrew's point, we choose two or three locations to start with. We can always, we amend policies all the time.
Right.
Right, we can always open it up. I mean, how do you, what do you charge for the engraving? It's just based on what the engraving, what do you charge for the engraving on the benches? Town doesn't pay for that, right?
No, the applicants.
Twenty-five hundred.
They're paying for the whole bench.
Forty-five year plaques that we.
Yeah, that we do.
Employees.
Yep.
We pay for that, it's the town.
Yep, well, that makes sense.
I mean, you know, I presented to you quite a while ago, Memorial Policy needs to be on the ballot. So with current pricing for the benches and things like that.
Do we need more locations for benches?
Yes, it's a whole.
No, we don't need more.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I don't know that we need more benches.
I'm hearing the, I'm hearing the opposite.
The policy I'm saying.
Yeah, she asked us, do we need more benches?
Yeah.
Do we need more?
The policy needs to be reviewed, current pricing needs to be obtained, for exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
For example, it's about $4,000 for those benches that are at the Cole Park, where you're writing.
And, and my point of bringing that up wasn't to derail the conversation to benches, was more to understand how do we, do you have to factor in the pricing in this policy for engraving?
You do, because you have to see, you know, what are you, what are you talking about?
Does it look like that? You're not going to have that size.
No, it's not going to look like that, no.
It's going to be this big, that's going to cost, that's going to cost more.
With engraving, H9.
So, that's why I said I need a little more, exactly what the board's thinking about to, to write it up. You had to say there'll be a, a wall of recognition at the High School Athletic Facility.
It has to be something that can stand up to weather, or it has to be.
Right, it has to be marble, yeah.
$10,000 to $50,000.
Easily.
Depends what it is, and you go marble, something like that's going to be a fortune.
It's got to be nice, you don't want to.
No, exactly.
Thank you for your service. But I think the snack shack's already named after someone, isn't it? It was named after someone previously.
The purposes of this policy tonight, we could add a line that says the fields, the athletic fields located at the High School and at Central Field will not be subject to individual naming. We can just say that as a policy and then work on, you know, it is, there's a lot of work to do before we put up a board with the intent that we're going to do some kind of recognition.
Right.
But, I mean, that, that means we are thinking, okay, there's how many fields out there? Five, six fields?
About the High School?
Yeah.
Well, there's three, but they're.
Multipurpose.
But there theoretically be three fields named, you know, the Jim, Karen, and Tony fields, if we didn't do that. Do we really think that's a terrible idea?
Well, which actually suggests the issue of money, not to be crass about it, but if, if it's going to cost us, let's just say $50,000 to put a memorial wall up, out at the High School, what is the value of having someone, a field named after you? It's.
A lot.
It's a lot, it's a lot, and right now, it's nothing.
Well, that's how we had the, with the naming of rooms, it was monetized by the value of the room. You wanted a whole room, that costs a lot more than having your, you know.
Right.
The amount of plaque. But that's, I think, too.
You have to think about, on that wall, or if you call it, what are the criteria for going on? Is it someone who made a contribution, money, time, coaching, whatever? Is it in memory of someone who, you know, was a longtime baseball player in the town? But, you know, who's, who's going to go on? You can't just broad strokes, because it's a policy, which means it's, it's just kind of a guideline, but you don't have to. There's no punishment if you say, well, we're going to do this anyways, we're not going to follow the guidelines. Tony's been here for 100 years, everybody loved Tony, we're going to name this after Tony, and that's what we're going to do.
Right.
But you just need to leave some kind of, you know, so at the High School, it's, it's, we're going to put names of people who made a contribution to High School and youth sports in the town of Situ, that's who's going up there. And at the Veterans Gym, it might be people who made a contribution to youth sports and, you know, people who served, veterans who made a contribution, whatever it's going to be. But I just have to have some idea of what you want, so I can, I can at least put a bold, a bold frame, framework around it.
Maybe that's what funds the walls, that there is actually, there's actually a cost to do it.
Right.
You have to pay for the chair.
Yeah, but there is, there are going to be times where they're honorific, like, you know.
Yeah.
That, you know, you're not going to, you know, so and so did something extraordinary for the town.
Yeah, Joe Norton.
Yeah, and you were saying, we want to honor, I mean, I mean, yeah, we're going to charge the Norton family for the E U C run, that was an honor. So I don't think we can. The select board determines those consequences, it doesn't the town alone, really.
True.
That's what I'm saying.
But I think, I think Karen's point is you had, just using Joe's example, you've got someone who spent his life in the service of the town.
Right.
And you're going to say, well, we want to, we want to put up a plaque on him, Joe, but you don't have to pay $250 for us to do it. That's.
Well, we could waive that.
You don't. Again, Karen's saying, we got to have kind of, just the bald facts to kind of guide the board, then you can go inside and outside of them, but.
But I think this gets us much closer, because that's exactly what happens, we're all like, wow, we're just making it up as we go. This gives everybody on the same place. If you want to, if you want to propose a memorial or an honor, you have to go through this process, as we meant it. And the only thing I think that we really have to decide tonight is whether or not we want to carve out those two fields while we figure it out. Those two complexes. Is that fair?
Well, what else is left?
There's going to be more.
I'm sorry.
Not, I mean, not much of Cudworth Fields, but you could, there's two fields there?
Every field, Green Bush.
I'm not renaming the purple dinosaur.
Small, the small field up at Cushing, you know, you, you could.
Nobody wants that field named after them.
You know, I mean.
That's a disaster.
Well, somebody, somebody gave.
So many to rehabilitate it.
Actually, that's a very good point, this policy doesn't say we reserve the right to relocate or something. Because what happens if Cushing gets redeveloped or something?
What is?
We'll wait until we need a new name for Cushing Hathaway.
I'd like to raise just a concern, so if we are thinking as a board to restrict the larger complex or Central Field from being named, from having a name, a submission of one naming opportunity, if you will, I would suggest that we put it in here, because the minute we pass this, you don't have that reservation anymore.
I think you put it in as the, you know, the intention of the board to not entertain.
Yeah.
Naming rights for.
And I'm not saying that's where I'm at, but I just want to.
High school complex and.
Raise that.
And that from the Memorial Gym.
Well, I mean, it's already named, so.
Yeah, but you can rename things, it's been known to happen.
So this doesn't work for like the benches and stuff, right?
This isn't, no.
No.
This, this wasn't about the benches.
That's the memorial policy, of course.
Well, it's, because it's a different animal. We're not asking people to submit letters of recommendation.
Defying it, they're, we're identifying what's available and what it costs.
To memorialize, yeah, much different.
And they, in honor of somebody.
I agree.
This talks about buildings and, and major features, so the benches aren't considered major features.
So for example, we, we never did name the North Situate Playground, and there was talk of naming it after Susan Pippin, that went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth.
We voted to name it that.
But the original, there was a lot of discussion about naming it after Susan Pippin. And the board had a number of discussions, if I recall correctly, about what to do with that, what to name it. And it went back to, that's why I think to talk about geographical features is important, or historical context, so. With Mordecai Lincoln, we're not going to go re. we're not gonna go rename Mordecai Lincoln, I would hope. Or to street fields, anyway, so.
Well, and you can change the name, and, I mean, they changed the name of the Boston Garden, and everybody still calls it the Garden.
They got a lot of, a lot of money to do that.
People still calls it the Garden, so.
A lot of money.
So do we want to add a fourth guideline, just about the, the full naming of, just identify the three larger complexes right now?
Maybe, or you, maybe you say it more generic, like the, the, the board will look to name larger complexes, um, you know, in multi.
Or reserves a right to.
You probably have to name them, otherwise.
I think you do.
I think Jim's right, the board, it is, this, the intention of this policy is, the, the board is, how did you say, you said it right?
Sticking it as in word, I was gonna do it.
Replay that video.
It is not the intention of this, um, policy to allow.
To entertain naming proposals for the high school fields and Central Field.
Single naming proposals, how about that?
Right, I agree to name them.
No, 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 yeah, I agree.
Well, then you're getting into, if you've got three fields at the high school, are you gonna name, you're gonna let someone name a field at the high school and other field?
No, I think it's a complex.
Yeah, it's a bit of a complex.
Yeah, that's what we just said, they'd be carved out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not our intention to allow any individual naming of fields in those complexes.
Good.
Or.
Or the field.
Or the complex.
Yeah.
The complex or the fields, they're on.
Okay, I'm good with that, just gives us a little bit, buys us a little bit of time.
Yeah, and then.
We could name nothing.
Just name nothing.
Maybe we could put a few more.
Maybe we don't need a policy.
We shall name nothing.
Up for everybody.
I'm sorry, this is serious, but it is an alternative.
It is an alternative.
Well, to be honest with you, I, I think there is, the school department has a policy, they will not name rooms in the buildings.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that could be crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So. So with, with, with that, with that added, are we ready to vote, or do we need more time to think?
Well, just.
Well, now I'll have to give it back to you at the revisions and.
Okay, sorry, Jim.
But I put, I put that carve out right under applicability.
You did what?
The, the carve out, it is not the intention of the board to accept proposals for the naming of fields at the Citewatt High School Complex or Central Field. For people to know right away.
Well, maybe in, yeah, maybe we say those areas will be, um, are being chosen to look for multi, um.
Those under consideration.
Multi-memorial situations or something.
I don't think, unless we need to say anything, because we haven't figured it out.
Say, don't, if you wanna name one of those fields, we're not really gonna entertain that. And someone might come in with a person, they say, oh my God, you're absolutely right, that, that person deserves to have this named after them, and we'll do it.
And we can always override a policy.
But you just don't want someone coming and say, hey, you know, my son Johnny played baseball there for twenty-five years, and, you know, now he works the hot dog vendor at the Red Sox, I want to name the field after him, no, don't bother, we're not, we're not considering that sort of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, so you'll get back to us with yet another iteration, to try and design, get this done in a century.
Now, let's do the back and forth with them.
All right. Another one-day wine and malt license, maybe we need one here, right?
Click a motion?
Yes, please.
Move that the select board approve, um, a one-day wine and malt license to the Family Crest Catering for an event at the Citewatt Harbor Community Building on August seventh, 2021, from 6:30 to 10:30 PM.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries.
And then move that the select board approve a one-day wine and malt license to catering by Michael Apria for an event at the Citewatt Maritime Center on August 31st, 2021, from 10:30 AM until 2:00 PM.
Motion by Ms. Curran?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries.
Move that the select board approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Knights of Columbus at the Knights of Columbus Hall from 2:00 to 6:00 PM for the golf tournament on August 6th and the council cookout on August 7th.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Discuss vote new drain layers licenses. Anyone like to make a motion?
In a roll, Maura.
All right, move to approve a drain layers license for Tri-County Excavators, Global Contracting Services, Modern CCS, and Pond Corporation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss vote board and committee appointments, we have, have the two candidates in from the zoning board of appeals, is the board inclined to vote?
Yep, second motion?
Yes, please.
Move to appoint Chris Kasha as the first alternate and Justin Marks as the second alternate to the zoning board of appeals for a term of three years or until successors named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Second by Ms. Canfield, motion by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Thank you for them, uh, for them coming in tonight and wish them luck in their new endeavor. Uh, other business liaison reports, anyone have one? I know it's the dead of the summer.
Well, we can all talk about CPC, they, uh, had their original or their first review of the projects before them, which included the land on Borders Tree, um, it included the farm, farming out on the west end, and it include, what was that third one?
The baseball fields. Baseball fields?
Which one?
The baseball field?
What did it do? I can't remember.
Wasn't Little League, I, I lost.
Oh, right, right, the CPC for the JV baseball field, yeah, oh, yeah. And then the other one I went to was REC, where they discussed the location of the, the, um, Little League Baseball for the JV baseball field, they had a good conversation, a good turnout of people, and they're gonna have another meeting to finalize it and then send us back a recommendation.
And they have a CPC, uh, application already filed, right?
Yeah, that's the one that.
Yeah. Ms. Canfield?
Uh, just very quickly, I wanted to just note that the Beach Commission, which was formed, I don't know, four or five years ago and had a, a strong group, they've all retired, basically, uh, which after long years of service, and I just want to acknowledge that, um, you know, they really gave a heart and soul.
Did a lot.
Uh, and so to thank them all, uh, for leaving, I know I'm gonna miss, so Steve, Stephen Tripp, Nancy Fay, and Mary Jo McCanally, I think that's everyone in the room?
And Steve O'Brien.
And Steve O'Brien, who were all, the original Vanguard, have retired, their service was great, uh, given us an opportunity to invite a lot more people to come in and reconstitute that, but I just wanted to acknowledge they did the Moby Mats, they put in so much blood and sweat to, to get that off the ground. Um, and the other thing is, I went to the council on aging meeting, and they were, I didn't, I forgot to bring this sheet with me, but they were recording the programming, and they, remember when they came and said, we build this, they will come? Well, part of it's COVID too, but their programming is just going like this, people attending, they're adding classes all the time, um, it's, it's really exciting, and the lunch program's gonna kick off here soon, right?
We've hired the, the manager, he is now, in the process of getting supplies, planning a menu, and getting ready to kick that off, we'll start with lunch, and then once we get that up and going, hopefully we'll start adding a little more breakfast besides they're doing right now, just coffee and kind of muffins and stuff.
So, but it's very exciting there, and it's really just, you know, the board's doing a great job, just, you know, trying to run as fast as they can to keep up with, with the positive results, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Maura?
Yep, a couple of things that I think you'll be interested in, so the Jericho ramp down by, um, the parking lot there, adjacent to the Citewatt Boat Club and, and the Marina, um, Doug Cameron came to visit us from the Office of Fishing and Boating Access, so, um, they are working on, um, a bid to just look at design and construction improvements for that area, um, so they're waiting, those bids should be due back on September 2021, he'll review it with Stephen, Jim, and also, um, the Waterways Commission, um, but they're looking at stormwater management, pier improvements, seawall improvements, lighting, realigning the stripping, parking paving, um, so I did talk to him a little bit about our plans of looking at Pier 44 as well, um, so as we look to see what we do there, if there's any component that would, um, provide additional parking or any services to the fishing and boating community, we could certainly tap into them, um, for additional funds, um, so thought that was great, um, we can allow seasonal permitting parking there and collect fees, as long as those fees go back to the maintenance of that particular parking area, um, for Jericho, like back to Jericho, so, um, that is permitted, so I think that was great news too. Um, so I just want to share that with you, because I'm really excited to see what they come back with. And then the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, um, they're starting to hold their, uh, meetings, they have a public, meeting with the Public Safety Team on August 20th, the DPW team on 7/29, so that's coming up, um, and then Health and, and the, and the Facts Group, they're gonna meet with them again shortly, they don't have a date yet, but they're moving along pretty well, um, and Joan Moschino visited, so thank you, Joan, and, um, spoke to them, and they really appreciated her time. Yeah, so it was nice. That's it.
Andrew?
Water Resources tomorrow, seven o'clock, um, at the library, having their meeting, they've made a lot of work on the offset rebate program, so they'll be kind of hashing out a lot of that tomorrow, so, uh, folks at home who want to get input on that and see what's going on, it's a good opportunity, uh, but they have made a lot of great progress, so hopefully we'll work back some good news.
Good. Oh, I have a question, Jim, about the community aggregation, um, program that we approved like a year ago, and I guess it's been sitting up at the state, have we heard anything from them about?
DPU is just crickets right now, they haven't, there's several that are pending before them, not just ours, they just haven't moved in anyone.
Because that was a question that I got an email about, so.
Just that Power of Public Utilities has not done anything on any of those, because at this point, they're just sitting there.